Be.
So tomorrow night, you just vote on which one of those you want to go with and we'll notify T-Dot. And if you all want to stay with April twenty sixteen, I'll get Matt start on the bid packets and we'll have everything back for April for you all hopefully to approve. And then we can start construction in May if T-Dot's ready.
Well, I know that the original contract was signed in two thousand nine. So seven years is long enough to, I mean, and T-Dot's doing what they need to, of course, but, oh. The money's already been let, so if we go ahead and bid it separately, we will get the money back from T-Dot that, actually, we're just getting our own money back, pretty much.
Steve Langford says it's about a ten to fifteen percent market for utility subcontract, so. Budget numbers are in your packet, as always. There's a balance sheet in there with month-to-date expenditures, year-to-date expenditures and expenses. And thought I put them up there, but there is. There's revenue month-to-date is three hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred five dollars, thirty-three cents. Year-to-date revenue is two million, eighty-three dollars, four hundred and five eighty. Month-to-date expenses are a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nine cents. Year-to-date, one million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. So year-to-date expenditures are under revenue. And with that, we've been discussing the fifteen sixteen has the fire hall in it. And I just need to know what you all wish to do with that. This is the original plan that's coming down with what Mayor Bill Bruin had proposed several years ago when he was fire chief. With one exception, that it has an EMS wing on there. Proposed construction cost back then was somewhere around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was through AEI. The proposal I have would take off the remodeling of this section right here. But this right here is the current fire hall. So all of this in here is the current location. What we would do is if we don't remodel this, I think you could save at least a hundred and twenty thousand just on the remodel. Now, this is still gonna need a roof and we could leave this EMS wing off. And this is where the building's at now. So this shows you what the driveway is. This is main street. And this section here is the current building with a parking lot back here and a small drive beside it. So all of this will be excavated to allow that entry to come around the back. And this is what I think we could do. This is the current fire hall. Leave the bays just like they are. Take this section that's currently there, allow EMS to use it, and turn this office space into possibly a bunkhouse. And then add on everything we need out here. And if eventually you need to go to a full-time fire department, you could add a wing back here to house a living quarters. Or you might even go to a second floor here. This takes out this set of bays, which would have had two ambulances in it anyway with the EMS wing. Those ambulances are here, plus we gain one parking space for equipment for the fire department. We could turn this into a training room with a mini kitchen at the back and have offices and storage here, as well as these two additional storage spaces.
Have you gotten a, an estimate of?
I have not.
I think you should.
If you all want to proceed with that, I would need to know if you wish to continue with AEI or do you want to do a request for proposals? Um, how, how you all want to proceed with that. I think this plan you could probably do for four hundred thousand or less. It would give you all of the space you need for EMS, plus all of our training space and storage space, but still allow you options in the future. If the fire hall goes to full time, you eventually have that option if you needed it.
I like it.
So.
Do you think we need to go and get somebody else to give us a figure on that, Keith?
Well, we can take RFPs on it. I mean.
You can. I mean, I could call AEI and ask them what they think this would cost. Got some estimates. Um, just the remodel alone was a hundred thousand dollars. The EMS wing was about ninety thousand complete. And both of those have been removed from this. You still have to put a new roof on the old fire hall. You gotta change a little bit of the structural inside over here because you're gonna have to have some HVAC for the training room, moving it out here. But I think this would be a viable option that we might could look at.
So that will be putting heat and air and everything in the old building too?
No.
Oh, you just won't do that?
I don't, is it heating air units bad down there?
Yeah.
We'd have to do that too. Now, the bays down there do have a new gas heater, so the bay would be alright with the gas heater current gas. Tommy Copeland's here. Do you have any?
What's going on?
Comments or?
Um, you know, this seems to be workable. Keith and I have talked about this for the last couple of months. And you know, let's take out the existing part for EMS and, you know, having those couple of bays, I don't see that as a problem. Right now, I do not have the staffing, staffing in addition to what, uh, you know, I'm doing right now from eleven in the morning to eleven at night. That is something that I intend to ask for in this year's budget. So if y'all look forward with the fire hall, that would be something that, an additional help in that, I think, so.
Well, looking, Mr. Copeland, looking at the current drawing as it is and the way Keith explained it, uh, the spaces that we were speaking about here. Uh, turning this into a, you know, sleeping quarters, of course, for your personnel. Uh, of course, it, it's already got the kitchen and bathroom facilities and everything else, but, uh, uh, everything you see here, is that workable to you?
I've not actually got somebody to come in and do the rest for us, but, you know, what I, what we need to be true, I think, yeah, that's very workable. Because turn that into a bunk room, for the office, that's what the office is for.
Right. Okay.
And two bays more than that, I think, I don't think it's.
Right. Mr. Reel? Any comments or?
I don't know. I've, I've, I'm very proud of you all who are approaching this and that anybody might come to come and listen to this. I think you've done it last year. We were kind of long silent, but it was it. Um, so, you know, hopefully, you know, when it's presented, the budget, Tom was asking, can you help with you?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Atwood?
Can I ask Tommy a couple quick?
Well, sure. This is an open public meeting, sir.
Where are your people present? You said you didn't have the staff now, with the staff twenty-four hours. Are they all at the one location now? Is that where you keep everybody?
Well, not when I need the staff in order to stay. I only have one crew in each station. I've got one Marley, one Baxter, one crew over at Willow, and one crew over at, uh.
Carlin.
Avery, phrase, Carlin Brown. So I don't have a fifth crew. And this would require another twelve-hour crew to, uh, for people to do that. Is that late here? Do you want to do wire transfer? Yeah, late this morning, section of.
And your intention in the budget is to ask for that this, this time?
Yeah, and, and not to speak for the county commission, but I would think if the space was available, that would probably help them towards, uh, crews. You know, getting the crews that we have, like, so. Right now, we probably, we don't have a, a way to keep a crew up here all night.
Right. And we realize what we do with this is contingent upon what you folks are gonna be able to do.
I would love to see an ambulance here twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
The, you have the equipment to do that. All you lack is the personnel. And what is the call rate for this area? I mean, is it, does it, I mean?
I, I would assume barely, you can get some, we've got masters here. Uh, you know, plus, uh, you know, it's a pretty populated area, you don't call around here, so.
And we're building new apartments too, so that's gonna increase the population.
I know the daytime crew rolls pretty often.
They say keep the road hot.
Yeah.
Keep, well, now, if people go to point of our service, will we need first responders in?
Well, that is a good question.
Probably minimal, I would say.
I think you'll still need the first responders. I think a lot of times they help and supplement. Uh, you know, I don't think we'll completely replace it because this truck, even though, just like it is right now, you know, we have an ambulance in. All good, but that ambulance has to go to the hospital with patients from here. They have to back up crew wheel. They have to, you know, make other runs. So you're still gonna need the first responders.
There's been several times.
I'm sorry. The level of qualification with your police department and your volunteer fires as far as EMT, do, do they have any certification or any of your people?
Victor, that's a question.
Yes, yes, they do.
Uh, how many first responders on staff?
Uh, five.
Five first responders.
Any paramedics on staff?
Uh, I have one. I, I have an EMT.
EMT?
You know, he, he works in Kentucky dispatch and stuff, so he's not really in town a lot.
But you have five certified first responders?
Yes.
Alright.
Well, I think you can tell, Captain, I support whatever we can as far as that's concerned, to try to get this, uh, accomplished if within the, um, the parameters of my hearing. So, uh, it's, it's hard to say yes, definitely, without knowing more specifics, but we are both very receptive to try to get this, to help you through the county and see that, that this happens. Our IM and I'm sure he is.
And this is, again, this, this is something else, else that's been on the burner for a while, so we're, you know, trying to move forward with it, so.
We wanna keep all good growing.
Yeah. Well, you know it better than anybody, the more the population grows, the more the need is, so. I think it, uh, I don't know, we'll talk about it tomorrow night, but I'm not, I personally am not against getting some RFPs on it.
We still have that money set back for the fire department, don't we?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That money's been moved from budget year to budget year for about three or four years now.
Yeah.
It's never went away. That, it's always been there.
Well, they're, really, they're not any use in looking anywhere else about AEI or whatever that word, AEI is done.
But they've done the conceptual, that design, they have not done any of the engineering or mechanical or any of that work. They pretty much stopped once they had a conceptual design laid out.
Did we pay them to do that?
We did.
Yes.
Uh, that was paid several years ago. Everything they have done up to this point has been paid out. So at this point, regardless of what you did with it, they're, they're caught up and if you take the design and do what you wish with it.
If I'm not mistaken, the original design on that was done at the same time this design was done on this building.
Mm-hmm, it was.
It was all done at the same time because they handled the, uh, they handled this building as well, so.
There's a possibility, as minimal as that change is, that they might could give me a conceptual cost analysis without too much work. I can call and ask if you all wish me to do that.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be a good idea.
Yeah.
Sure do. Um. I know you guys are in budget talks presently, are you not?
Well, we haven't, we haven't started. The department heads are presenting and.
Okay.
And formulating theirs and it's to be presented for them next, uh, that part, this is my first part of next month, we'll start seeing some numbers.
Okay. I mean, I don't wanna push it. I wanna do it right from our point of view and, and the county's point of view as well, so, uh. Give us just a little more time and we'll, we'll get something figured out, something that, uh, maybe we can even, you know, present, uh. Uh, maybe on paper to you, but, uh, you know, you guys will have to look at and, and, uh, uh.
Well, another question, more you can keep us informed of what your needs are. I mean, I, I don't know that we've ever addressed this group or, or I certainly have not, but. I pledge myself, we represent all of you and certainly that's my job to do and I, I relish that opportunity and, and look forward to the chance to do just that.
Right.
So the more you can keep us informed as far as what you need from the county perspective, the more we can help you.
Right.
Uh, and certainly we're pledged and, and to do just that, so, uh, yeah, keep us in the loop, let us know where you are and what we can do to help. And, uh, and we have to convince eleven more, uh, commissioners to, to pass anything. So the more, the more we have in, uh, in advance, the more we can work on trying to get those books and, and, uh, and sell our projects, but.
I've, I've got, being, being that we're talking county, I, you know, on, uh, Old Walton Road. You know, where that sidewalk goes down, there's a sidewalk and it stops right at the city limits. There's a hill where the little cemetery is. And that's a real dangerous area. And I'm surprised, when I was living on, uh, in Arbor Place, I'd see, you know, women walking babies in the road, pushing babies and stuff and. And then, you know, I suggested, you know, to Vouch that, you know, we needed a sidewalk there. Well, we ended up putting a sidewalk there, but then it stops. And, and, and I brought this up when I first came on council with Keith, that, and, and I have pursued it. I have a long list of things, but that's on, on. You know, I, this is a dangerous, dangerous area. And I think you and Keith may, I don't need to look at that because we've talked about it, it's right. Right where the little cemetery is on the left going east, there's a little hump and the kids, you know, once they. And you got a lot of kids now walking on that sidewalk, once they disperse to their houses, they have to make a choice of crossing the road and they're crossing the road right where a hump is. So, you know, if you had some crazy fool driving really fast, jumping that hump during school, you know, there's a chance somebody's gonna, somebody may get hurt one day right there.
And see, that's where our cell phone ordinance should have went through right there.
Sidewalk, yeah.
Is that what you're saying, to, to link in the sidewalk to over that rise? That's what you're thinking of?
Over that rise and there's a triangle point and we could run that past the triangle point is, because you can't see over that hump. You know, and as you're walking, you know, right below the hump, the kids are having to cross either go left or right or straight. Well, they can't go straight because there's no sidewalk. So they have to go left and then they have to walk in somebody's yard to get to their house. Especially if we extend the sidewalk as a county, we could carry it on to the other neighborhoods where they could safely walk versus being in the middle of the road.
Mr. Atwood, I think when that sidewalk was close to complete and then the installation of the guard rail around the school. When Mr. Jones was there, the county road supervisor, I think we might have touched on that at that time, but I'm not certain. And of course, that's all questions for him, of, of course, but, uh, uh, and, and Mr. Erz is right. I mean, it, it is a, it's a detriment, especially a lot of kids during school time, walking back and forth through there, but, uh. And that might be a question for, you know, for, for you guys to, to Mr. Jones, how can we look at this and say what can be done, if anything, at the present time?
I, I, I'm aware that there are some, some grants that have been applied for, through the school system.
Yes, sir.
For sidewalks.
Yeah.
And so it may qualify, that may be one of these that would qualify for that, so certainly I, I'll look into it. I don't know exactly where we are in relation to that and what they're, uh, they're gonna do with their grant money. Uh, again, it's for that purpose, it's sidewalk construction for schools.
Right.
And it sounds like this certainly would, would qualify for that, so be happy to look at it.
Thank you.
And anytime, or not anytime, but, uh, whenever we get to talking numbers a little more closely, I'm sure. Mr. Copeland, you and Mr. Morrison will get together and he can tell you what we found out, uh, kinda give you a little heads up before you start doing your numbers. And I know you've got a tight schedule and a lot of numbers to consider, so we'll try to get those to you as soon as we can.
As far as personnel, I already had to submit my budget last, uh, I guess about two weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
So I've already asked for the personnel, but I think if y'all have definitely decided that you're willing to go through with this and willing to go in and give us that space and this, and the budget. I think that would probably be helpful for the commission, um, you know, deciding what our fundings position is.
Sure.
The portion of our county executive comes from that part, so he probably has a receptive ear to what comes to that budget, I would think.
Keith, what else you got tonight?
Let's go over some things here.
Okay.
Uh, this is Harp Avenue. Uh, boatwork staff's been working hard. Uh, this is the bottom of the hill behind the Presbyterian Church. They put a new tile in, uh, done some rip raft, uh, some new drainage work. If you wanna speak to me what it is, uh, and you can see where the widening has started. I mean, there's residents there. Tickle death, see the road widening happening and getting ready for that pavement to come in. Um, this is a little bit closer shot. You can see where we've took a couple, with a couple feet on each side, yeah.
Victor, were there any tile in there where you put that new in?
Uh, yes.
Pretty old?
It was just, uh, broke down and ran and replaced it.
Okay.
That's, but last time. We're going from a, a ten-foot street to a seventeen-foot street.
Outstanding.
Yeah. And some of it up through there was about eight foot.
Yeah, it gets, it gets some air all right through there, that's for sure.
The residents are tickled to see there'd be two lanes worth of road there.
We'll have to pull in somebody's driveway to pass, yeah.
Uh, this is Riley's path, uh, up next to Roger Williams Storage. There was a big ditch there. Uh, people were getting off in it. Road was breaking off. We're losing road really bad. Uh, so what we've done here is tiled all of that and got it to where we can wind it up a little bit. And if a car does kinda inch off the pavement, they're not gonna fall into a three-foot deep ditch and get stuck there.
Right.
Um, these are some culverts, uh, some drains that were put in to help, uh, get the water down into the tile. And, uh, I think that's already up quite a bit.
Right.
We're not losing the road now. Uh, you can, giving it back the width it needs. Of course, that'll be repaved.
And when they pave that, that'll all be leveled, leveled out.
Right.
That's gonna make a big difference there as well.
Yeah, 'cause that's on the paving.
That road's in there and made us some help.
They were on our paving list, so, uh, we should be ready to go. Now, this is the snowplow. Uh, we talked last month. Uh, about the condition of the plow and salt eating on it. Uh, this is the front of the bed, behind the cab, underneath the dump. And, uh, this is the front right behind the cab, the bed. Uh, this truck's washed and cleaned every time it comes in from, uh, from a snow, snowplow job. You know, it might go a couple of days, but as soon as it gets finished, it's hosed down, cleaned up and try to get as much off as we can, but you can see what it's doing.
Could we put some pretty oil-based paint on it, just to stop the, stop the rust, slow it down a little bit?
It's, yeah, it might slow it a little bit. It's still gonna rust from underneath and pop off, but even at that, you know, if, if we get a new snowplow, this truck's not gonna be sold. We can still get some use out of it. It's just if it breaks down and it's not the primary sn- snowplow or, or then a little less damage if we're down on this truck for a couple of days and it's just a backup truck.
Well, it's definitely eating on it pretty quick, isn't it?
The truck's only got twenty, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand miles.
Can you change those screws out, put new screws in?
Uh, it's not, it's just the, the bed and all's eaten up, so here's another shot of the bed.
Could it be, uh, like sprayed, like you know how you can spray, a heavy sprayer and spray the rust off and repaint?
Uh, you won't spray it off because you'd have to put it, yeah. There wouldn't be much metal left. Uh, there's a side shot.
Isn't it, isn't it kinda like a tank, a water tank?
Uh, this isn't like the tank, no. It's eaten down into the metal. Uh, so here's a frame shot. And the frame is, is, the rust has gotten down inside of it. It's eaten away from the front frame and starting to make it spread out there. There's the other side.
You know, it's just oxidation on the outside. It doesn't oxidize on the inside till it.
I think the best thing you do is go over and look at it. I mean, 'cause, you know, that's a picture. Go over and look at it for a ten.
Can you take a nail, a nail on it and rust come off?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, take a hammer and just bang it?
Sure can. I've got, uh, some of that metal is probably, when it was bought, it was probably about a quarter of an inch. It's probably about a little bit more than an eighth of an inch right now. That's how much it eats the pit. That salt is so corrosive, you know, it, it'll just eat anything. And, you know, the best way to do that is to do all stainless, stainless steel and aluminum. Well, you know, that's costed way too much to do something like that.
Well, let me ask you this, and I'm just asking because I'm not sure. Uh, going forward, I mean, with any of the newer vehicles we get, uh, could we have them undercoated?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't.
It won't help?
It won't work.
Okay.
Well, see, the thing about this, uh, that, the salt and stuff, it gets in, penetrates in behind that paint. You can take and peel the paint off of sheets. It's, you know, it looks like it's, it's good, but then you can peel it off. I think you guys can come over there and just look at yourself, you know, um.
The truck's eleven-year-old too. I mean, it's.
So we've had eleven years?
We've had it eleven years, so, you know, we've got a lot of good service and it's took it that long to get looking like this because they take really good care of the truck.
Certainly they do. Do you can get any money out of it?
Uh, you could. I think you'd be better off to keep it as a backup dump truck and sell off the oldest dump truck we got and just start working them through the line now.
We'll take them out.
Yeah, 'cause you've got built up to three trucks, which is about what you need. And this one, when it's plow season, it stays set up as a plow. And so that still leaves you two dump trucks to run on like the rope construction, the rock haul one. And then in summer, we can get, we use this one, you know, for a little bit of the clean stuff.
Is there any, keeping and getting another snowplow, is there anything we can do to, to slow down that rust? I know we're not gonna be using a salt truck anymore. Can we do something to it to kinda get, keep its longevity?
Yeah, we could probably get it sandblasted, send it out and have it sandblasted, repaint it. But it, it would, it would have to go out of house to do it. We couldn't do it.
Certainly. We ought to do that if we're gonna keep it, you know, even as a, as a backup.
Yeah, another thing you could possibly do, you know, is, is to put another bed on it, you know, but then you still have that frame part that's rusted out, you know. The front end's okay, uh, all the bolts and everything, it's pretty much rusted. We had to change the springs on it. We had to, one of them broke. And we had to actually cut it off because we couldn't get the nuts off because it was just.
Well, a lot of the solder together in the oxide.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, uh, yeah, you could probably, I think it might last a year, year and a half, two years maybe. Uh, the salt's in it. It's in, it's in, it's in with the metal. Uh, we take it, we, we power wash it and clean it with detergent. And then we'll take a diesel and hydraulic combination and we'll spray that truck and it still rustes. I've talked to guys, um, Knoxville uses this chemical and they just said they're just throwing money down the ground. If you can get it, it says, you know, it'll, um, it will, uh, dilute the salt from the metal. It doesn't, you know, and I get these brochures all the time saying, you know, it's gonna hit your salt truck. Well, I've talked to Knoxville because they really got, they got a big fleet and they said they don't, they're just wasting money. They don't bet that.
I think we oughta add to, to, uh, I think we oughta add to, maybe not this meeting, but next meeting, to, uh, bid the salts to sandblast the truck. Even though we can get a new truck, sandblast that truck and keep it as long as we can as second hand.
We could do that.
And repaint.
Include that with next year's budget.
I would do that and, uh, put a new bed on it.
I can get all of those together for you.
Is that something that could possibly go on the five-year plan?
What's that?
If the beds have to be, if they're ate up with rust like that, is that something that needs to be?
You know, if, if you get this dump snowplow and you kinda keep this one in good shape, it's gonna be another ten years before you need another truck, so. Couple of five-year cycles hopefully before you need another.
Well, then you could five-year sandblast every, every three years.
Yeah.
And that may give it another fif- five-year life on it.
The other board we've got, it was a snowplow at one time, wasn't it?
Yeah, they all, they're, they're all snowplows.
They've held up. Once they're out of that salt, not eating on them all the time, I mean, we, we still use them.
We need to sandblast every one of them if we're gonna keep them.
We can look at that. I can get a quote.
What do you think, Victor? Would you have a, rather have rusty, rusty equipment out there or would you have like sandblasted, repainted equipment down there?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I'd like to see the equipment look a lot better, yeah. But, you know, when you sandblaste it, you know, you're taking more of the metal away.
A little bit, yeah.
Uh, and the problem with it is the bolts and stuff, if you try to work on it, it just, you can't get nothing off, you know, without having to cut it off. Uh, the best thing to do, guys, is just come over there and look at it and, and, uh, you've, you've seen pictures, but seeing it is believing.
I know what it looks like.
Yeah, it's back. Uh, we're gonna be sitting without a truck one day.
So we pay for the salt on the front end and then pay for the truck that the salt eats up?
It's on the back, isn't it?
Truck's much more expensive than salt.
Yes, sir. That's a fact.
Uh, this is the commercial garbage truck we talked about. Um, it's, uh, gonna need replacement. This, oh, three?
Yeah, oh, two.
Oh, two. So this truck's fourteen years old. Uh, last year, repair bills on this truck got up to twenty thousand dollars. Again, it's been cleaned, maintained, uh, looks a lot better than a lot of trucks three, four years old. Again, it's been cleaned, maintained, uh, looks a lot better than a lot of trucks three, four years old in a lot of places. Um, but it does have some, some failures that are starting to happen, pumps are going down, uh. Paint on it's in pretty good shape, uh, inside the bed on this, it didn't heat out yet, is it?
No, it's just starting.
Got some pin spots going in it. Um, with this, if we go with this commercial truck that has the corral can that goes on the front, I think you could sell, I think this truck would still sell for some money.
Yes.
And somebody would try to use it, even if they didn't use it for, uh, truck, uh, dump truck, they could use it for hauling, it's still got a good motor and stuff in it. Uh, but with the corral can, I think we could get rid of this truck and the, that freight liner that you can see the nose of. That's the backup residential, if the automated truck's down, that truck has to run in its place, uh, which means two guys are still out on the back of the truck, they don't have to lift the cans, but they have to ride the truck, drag the cans to the truck. Uh, if you replace this commercial truck with a, with a new corral can truck, you wouldn't have to do that. If one of them's down, you'd always have an automated truck to run, it only requires one driver. Uh, the corral can truck like this will do both routes, it's one truck, does everything. Uh, and you could get rid of those two, and I think get a little bit out of them. The upgrade from a regular commercial to that corral can is only about a fifty thousand dollar difference. Uh, but you get that added capability to do the residential route, um, with that truck. So, I think that would be a wise decision for us to look at that option and see, since you're gonna have to have a commercial truck anyway if we can't make it do double duty.
So, you got two trucks running right now, one residential, one commercial.
Residential, one commercial.
Get rid of both of them, make a little money, and put down on the new one.
Yep.
We should do both jobs, fifty grand more, we're looking at what, a hundred and twenty grand?
Oh, on that truck, three hundred and thirty thousand?
Brand new.
About three thirty.
Can you get one, uh, refur- refurbished, a year old or something like that?
Uh, not with that corral can. And then the commercial truck, you can get one refurbished, but, you know, you take a chance on what you get. I mean, it's an option we could look at, but if you get-
Maybe a year old?
If you get a refurbished truck-
I don't know if they have them or not.
You're probably not gonna get one with a corral can.
Well, if you get one, you get, either get new or you want a year old, maybe a display or something, like you can do at the car place?
Occasionally they'll have a demo model-
Yeah.
That they would run.
That'd be nice.
I can try to get, check on that, but we can check on it.
Well, if we're gonna play that kind of money for any type of vehicle, no matter if it's backhoe, garbage truck, whatever, it needs to have a warranty when it comes into this city.
Yeah, it's, these are expensive pieces of equipment.
Yes.
But again, you know, it's, you know, the truck's got a lot of age on it, we've gotten a lot of use out of it, it's been here a long time. And it looks good for its age compared to a lot of others, if you've seen them.
Well, if we get the new truck, then that would, uh, do away with those two trucks, and we wouldn't, if you had to run one of the old trucks like that, what happened at Livingston?
Right.
We don't want that to happen.
You wouldn't have that, because both your trucks, for residential, even the backup you would keep, would be fully automated.
Automated.
And so you wouldn't have that, that would get rid of that need for somebody to ride, you'd have two automated trucks that could run if you needed them to.
So, so, we're talking about getting one truck or two trucks?
One truck.
One truck.
One truck?
I've got three trucks right now.
Oh, keep the one we got.
Yeah, you keep the automated residential you already have, 'cause it's, it's only a couple of years old and it's still holding up good.
Is there any money in the budget for that?
Well, that's, um-
That's something we're gonna talk about for next year's budget.
Um, if you all wish to do that, that was one of the projects I had for Capital Outlay, along with a snowplow and a couple of other things here on that five-year plan that I gave you. Now, one of the other things we talked about was, uh, remodeling the community center, uh, this is the kitchen. Uh, these are the cabinets that are in the kitchen. In the five-year plan, I, for next year's budget, I put about ten thousand in for the community center. I don't know if ten thousand will be the kitchen, but-
I know.
What do you think?
How's the cabinets?
They're beautiful.
This is the cabinets I managed, they're all the rough-looking, kitchen needs and updating remodels.
You can get in a real nice Lowe's cabinets.
That's probably something that needs to go out on bid.
You'd have to bid it, but I wanted to put it in the budget for next year to try to do some of this.
How's the library grant coming?
Uh, I've checked on that.
Well, it's talking about, in that particular area right there, I know the first thing that needs to happen is the plumbing needs to be updated. It's in bad shape, or it's gonna be that way pretty quick. Well, that's basically been there since the building was built, which was we and Victor.
Well, the, uh, the stove is dead, we, we've replaced the stove since I've been here, and we've replaced the dishwasher.
Right.
Um, the sink and everything, uh, it can, you know, you can clean it up and reuse it. I think of, you know, I think if you put new countertops on it, paint the cabinets, put new countertops on it, put new tile down, new satin tile, new lights, I think you can make it look a lot better.
Are you gonna revamp any of the area with the ice maker back there too?
Uh, yes, yeah, we'll probably, I end up painting everything like that.
I'd get new everything, I'd rip that whole thing out and put brand new in there. Make it real nice.
What about the lights in the community center? Uh, we need to redo that, so, yeah, so all of that's gonna have to be redone. We're trying to phase it in, can't do it all at once, but we'd like to do it a little at a time. We're hoping to get the bathrooms remodeled before the end of the year, uh, hoping I've got enough funding in there, this is what the bathrooms look like. So, they need some work too. But those are, you know, some things I'd like to put into next year's budget, is the community center, the commercial truck. You know, it's, uh, paving, you know, I planned on trying to do about a hundred and fifty thousand and take some of it out of that, uh, street, state street aid fund, 'cause we probably need to pave Main Street next year once this water line project's done, 'cause it needs some work.
How long, that'll be a six-month project?
What's that?
How long will that, that Main Street project be?
For the water?
Yeah.
Uh, probably about two months, maybe.
Yeah, just a couple of months.
Then repave it, repaint?
And they can repave it about two weeks.
Yeah, the paving won't take too long. Now, at Walmart, they'll have to eat it up, you know, take up the old pavement and then put new-
Oh, you're not talking about down here?
I'm talking about the whole thing.
All the way down?
One eleven to one eleven.
Are you gonna enforce any rules for big trucks when you get it repaved?
Yeah, we're, we'll have to.
We need to enforce some over beside Trinity.
On Main Street, they can come, they can go through Main Street, it's a throughway for trucks.
And we include widening, like we're gonna do a three-lane, are we considering that?
Hadn't thought about it, we could, I mean, we'll, we'll have that grant this year hopefully for transportation, so hopefully that will come out as well.
We've talked about it, I mean, if we're gonna do it, now's the time, isn't it? You got some poles to move too, if you do that.
Yeah, three lanes, I don't know, could you get through the S curve?
Can't get through the S curve.
No, we'd have to.
Tear up Trinity.
Yeah, we'd have to buy some-
Sidewalk.
Yeah, you're talking about some property acquisition, if you three-lane any portion of that.
Yeah.
'Cause you're talking about-
I think that right away through there, just only sixty foot.
I was gonna say, you're talking about some land acquisition though, because of, you know, most of those people have lived up and down that street for number of years, but back to the community center, we would have to do that in phases, I mean, because, you know-
Still being occupied.
It's still being occupied, uh, with the people that use it, we don't wanna-
Unless you brought them up here, let them use one side of the-
How many groups occupy that at one time? I know there's like a sewing club and-
They're all a part of the senior center. One group plays games, one does quilting, and of course, the library's over there too, and we talked about moving it around or adding to it. Uh, then there's part of them that go out to, um, the church and do some, a couple of different classes, some exercise classes and a few things, and then they have people come over and do presentations over there, so.
Feels really nice though, it'd be useful more, it gets a little money out of it too.
You need to change the rules on it too, or rent it out.
I meant to bring those this month.
Because you'd get more, more people coming in to rent it.
Well, hopefully if we can upgrade these things and get them updated too, that will help with the rentals too, so. And then, uh, of course sidewalks, I don't know how much you all want to put in for next year, I wrote down forty thousand, uh, just as a starting point. Entry signs that you all had mentioned, I put five thousand on there to hopefully do, uh, at least one, maybe two. And then, uh, of course patrol cars will finish up the fleet program next year, and, uh, two of the first, uh, chargers we bought will be able to be sold, so.
If you do an entrance sign, we need to do one a year, and we need to make it really nice, kinda like the sign right up here, and you're looking at ten grand.
You think ten?
I'd say. My little sign costs four, four to five hundred, I know that's a nice size, it could be more.
I tried to find out how much this costs, but it was included with so many different subcontractors, couldn't figure out which one had that sign cost in them, so. I might call Fast Signs, get him to come give me an estimate on something like that and see what he says.
To erect something like you're talking about out there on, these signs are on the state right away. To erect something like that, I think you would have to get permission from the state.
We would, we'd have to talk to T-Daw to get, uh, permission to do it, but-
They are definitely on state right away.
Like the little wood sign that we have when, when Freddie was around? They put, you got, you remember the wood sign?
Yes.
Uh, you know, it was nice putting that up, but we could put real nice one right there.
One organization you could call would actually be Overton County, I mean, they've got a nice stone sign up there, uh-
They're on state right away too.
Yeah, you might, you might give them a call and see.
They're, it's been up a while.
It's been up for, for a number of years, but you might get an idea.
Right.
Something metal, something solid and some brick, you know, can just be, you know, some solid.
I would say something solid, 'cause, you know, if you have somebody, if you have wood in it, so I can take and bust it or whatever.
Right.
So, you constantly have to-
If I can, and I'm sorry to interrupt, please, if I can.
No, that's fine.
Uh, but I know as it relates to being in the right of way of the state of whatever, there are regulations as far as, um, how solid it can be, tailboxes specifically, because there is danger and, and cars hitting those and somebody being killed. So, they do all, and I don't know the restriction on signage, I, I'm sure it's pretty similar, but there is gonna be a restriction, because they don't want that kind of accident to happen, so they, they do ask you to make them a little more breakaway.
Right.
So, that if something does hit, that there's not a-
That makes sense.
And I'm sure there's a, I'm sure there's a size restriction and those things like that.
Well, the sign you're talking at Orton, as you're going up there, I was at LoJack at the time, and we donated the product, so I know they, they reached out to the various businesses, and we were one of them, and we donated the stone and the brick and the block for that project, uh, which obviously reduced the cost of it, so, and I mean, that's, that's possibilities too. Are y'all talking about Welcome to All Good?
A beautiful place to live, Welcome to All Good, a beautiful place to live.
And also another thing too, the Eagles, they do the scouting, you know, they do projects like that too. You know, I mean, you're contributing to them.
That's a big proj- I'm an Eagle Scout, I had an Eagle project, that's a big project.
I know, they do big projects, but, but, you know, it's just something to think about, you know, we all contribute.
Good idea.
What else you got?
That's pretty much it, uh, first responder truck for next year, and then we're gonna need a new water sewer service truck to replace cars for.
Sure.
Something I'll do in the duty to haul all the equipment and stuff. And that's pretty much all I had for next year's.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I need to be thinking about fire truck too. A fire truck fifteen-year-old.
Yeah, but you firemen keep up the fire truck real nice.
But you gotta keep up with your companies, you've got three-story buildings being built out here. They, they ain't got ladders to get up on the top of the trucks.
There's also federal regulations considered too.
Not me, but thinking about a ladder truck, ladder, ladder bunker trucks. It's also a bunker plus a ladder truck.
Anybody got anything else?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, what about the crossing guards, have you had any progress with that?
Working on that.
I seen, I took a, uh, snap or a picture of Cookwell, they put a ad out for crossing guards off Facebook, but anyhow, there's another one too. Um, for the fireworks on the Fourth of July?
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna try to have like a day activity, uh, leading up to the fireworks at night, to see if we can bring some revenue in?
We've tried to, that's something I was gonna ask you, it's on my list, um-
Have you talked to them over at Church? Pastor Richard or Pastor Mark?
We need to put that in the budget, whatever y'all are wanting to put out for that public relation, relation for that portion of the July Fourth show. Um, with the churches, I know, uh, I know they're all interested in doing it. The other thing is, probably don't wanna do it on the Fourth, the Fourth is a Monday. And Cookwell and Putnam County, you're gonna have a big show, so I think if you do it, maybe July second on a Saturday, might be your best bet.
Have you ever thought about having a craft fair?
Well, it's, we, I know some of the things have been mentioned, or maybe having some kind of a cook-off, chili or barbecue, uh, having the churches do some kind of kids' activity center over on the football field, and then that evening closes off the day with the fireworks show.
Barbecue craft fair?
And all the churches too, help, uh, clean up, and, and Church on the Hill's good for doing that. They do it for the parade, that's what they always do for us, so.
Right.
You have a lot of people coming barbecue.
A lot of people coming with bluegrass music, you know?
You have barbecue, bluegrass and craft show.
That's, that's the thing about it, if we decide to do it, we need to get on it quick, because you have to find the people who'll do the bluegrass all day long. And then the vendors and, you know, make the rules up of what we're gonna do and what we're gonna have.
That's a huge project, and if we get it done by July the Fourth, maybe next July the Fourth, you can pull barbecue, craft show.
No, we can pull that off.
And, uh, and bluegrass, all three in a row.
You gotta get out there and work.
It's a lot of work getting out there.
We can do it, we do it for the parade every year, we can do it.
Because people, we used to do that, when I was growing up, we used to sell baskets, you know? And I used to go to Memphis Flea Market and sell baskets, and I'd sit there, my dad would sell baskets, Pittlin, Nashville, and, uh, and even in small towns in Mississippi, and they start all small, I've noticed these craft shows we used to go to, they'd be real small, not many people in there. Each year they get bigger and bigger and bigger, and all of a sudden you got a thousand people, you got, you know, fifty craft shows, music and kids everywhere.
See, if we change the rules on the community center, we can do that over there. And the way you make money off those is you, uh, sell your booth, your space on your booth, so if you, if you do-
We did that one year.
If you do a booth by forty dollars, just saying forty dollars, and you have ten people, look at the money you're bringing in, plus all the revenue of people coming in, uh, eating and everything.
Well, if you're gonna have the fireworks show and you're gonna try to do some type of, uh, daily activity, whether it's barbecue and bluegrass or whatever, I mean, you're still talking about a lot of people in the city of All Good at any given time during that day, and especially at night. And I do recall the, uh, last fireworks that were held here, uh, it was wall-to-wall.
It was wall-to-wall, Trinity handed out free hot dogs. When I was a little girl, the Fourth of July thing over here was the thing to go to every year. It was just awesome all the way around.
We used to have bluegrass all the time, didn't we, Kathy?
See, you could, on that parking lot right there in between the field and the little, uh, green tent thing, whatever you call it, the shelter, you could block that off for a booth rental right there during the day and have vendors come in, and then it, just give them a certain time to be out for parking.
I can say, 'cause you know, even to, for fireworks safety, if, if they put it over at the park where they damn had it, you can't use that parking lot.
Right.
Because you have, you have to stay away so many feet from that.
Well, we just, the, what she's saying is, give them a certain time, say, five o'clock you gotta be cleared off, because the fireworks start at dark, you know? That would give you plenty of time to clear that parking lot.
Talking about craft show people?
Yeah, you could set up and do vendors there.
Well, they, they don't wanna come and set up at eight in the m- seven in the morning for eight o'clock and jet at six. They wanna do it a two-day show, Friday and Saturday.
Make it Friday and Saturday.
I doubt they wanna do that, 'cause they gotta pack it up and bring it back, you know? Whatever's fine with me, I just wanna make plans to make it happen.
So, we need to find the distance it'd take to do the, get away to a move, we'd have to be from the fireworks.
And the money that we make off of that, could we, uh, put that in the parade committee? And maybe the, or just do the Christmas, for the Christmas we do every year? So, we have like a little nest egg to start buying gifts every year?
Have to do designation, designation of funds. We have to write that the X amount, you can designate X amount of it to that.
Well, every year for the Christmas tree, we, we're right there, I mean, we're, we're pushing it to get everything covered. So, I think that would be a great contribution for that.
So, you can, you can put dollar amounts that you would like to contribute to that fund, and then it stays there?
Yeah.
Keith, anything else?
Uh, we've asked, uh, been asked that we consider a dispatch or a blue phone to contact the PD after hours, that there's nowhere for anybody to come up and get help if they need it after hours, or reach anybody, uh, see if you want to pick that.
Sort of like a call box outside, outside on that wall that he ended the building, yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Atwood, appreciate it.
I'm sorry to leave, I've got a six o'clock meeting.
That's fine.
I apologize for leaving.
We appreciate you coming. We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Just like the university.
Well, yeah. Richard, you, you're right. Richard made a good, it, it's a whole lot like the universities have now. A uh, a secure line to immediate help, you know, so.
The hospital act too.
Yeah, that'll be fine. And you could, I mean, you could put it as close to that indoor out there as you want it. Right. Right.
There, there needs to be another light put up here too on this corner.
Let's, let's look at that, Keith, for sure. I, uh, have, have you done any in-depth study on that? I mean, I. I know cost is always an issue, but you know, it's.
Call the university police department.
Yeah, you can call tech and see what uh, what kinda money we're talking about. And if that's something, I mean, I'm not against it. If that's something that we can do before this budget year's up, I'm not against that either, so.
Uh, I'll do that tomorrow and try to have something made.
Just give us some numbers we can look at or, or some kind of estimate.
Also, uh. Some of the, one of the residents at least, I know, I think two of them over there would like to have one, probably several places on. Small residential streets, uh, on Second Avenue. Our request and we talked about speed bumps over there. Uh, of course, that's something that has to be passed by the council. We're probably gonna have a public hearing.
Has that been, is uh, the rate of speed through there a big issue right now?
Well, we broke like several tickets over there. But it seems like it's still, I mean, of course. I can set somebody over there, of course, they get a call.
Right. You can't set somebody there twenty-four seven.
There you go, so, so. I, you know, I told them that I would talk to them about it and probably expect a year or something back.
Is that something that the, the citizens in that area, uh, all the houses can go in and donate so much money because. If we get one for Second Avenue, I know there was a lady in here one time from Deer Haven, that was wanting one too. I would like to have one on my road. And I live at Edin, so I mean, that's something that would get costly quick.
Well, I may say this, you know, cause I keep the parks clean, you know, you start putting in speed bumps here, if I want one in my neighborhood, you want one in your neighborhood, you want.
You can't keep up with them. And especially if it snowed and you plowed over them, you've lost what you paid for them.
Well, there's, there's a couple avenues we have. Actually, two or three. I mean, we can put in the speed bumps, uh, you know, if, if that's what the council desires. Two, we could not.
Rubber speed bumps.
Or just raise a traffic violation. Make it to where they don't wanna speak.
Once you start it, there's no way.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
What about posting some signs?
Of course, what you got is, it's not Main Street traffic, uh, you don't have cars coming all the time, it's just. It's the people live in that neighborhood.
And once they cross a railroad tracks, it's stand on it.
I'm gonna criticize it, cause you know, when I, when I see radar sign? I look and see how fast, I'm going, hey man, I'm going fifteen miles over speed lane. Not that I like speed anymore, but I used to. I used to be a speeder. So you know, people who speed, look at, say, ha, I got away with this, you know?
What's that, Keith? About a hundred doc- we got a hundred percent rating or something? Was that the police department? That was uh, Toshia. Toshia. Toshia came and visited Police Department Administration and we passed with a.
And also, we've had uh, had uh, Rex, Rex Park come from M-Tas and review their end-of procedure.
Excellent, congratulations.
The T-Deck Water Survey guy was here last week. We made a one hundred on that as well.
Excellent, fantastic.
One last thing was a museum, possibly somewhere in this five-year plan. Uh, some way to maintain the Allgood history and make sure we keep it up and some sort, so.
Is it still gonna go in or still, are we still pushing to put it in over here at the old community center or uh?
What, that's whatever y'all wanna do. Uh, if you use the LC Hall, it's gonna have to have some updates and handicap accessibility and parking's gonna have to be addressed. You know, I know we talked about moving the library down there, doing a museum or doing something, and that's a possibility. But if you do it, it's gonna take some money to update the building and get it ready. Uh, and that handicap accessibility and parking's gonna be a major issue.
Do it.
If you built one behind the old city hall there.
You can. It's on railroad right away.
Railroad right away.
Can only use it for parking.
Do we have any other place that we could put that?
I might gotta make a comment on that. I have a forty-year lease with the railroad. So my building, where you sit in my operatories, that's railroad property. So you can do.
You just have to lease the property.
I leased, you know, I'd say two hundred dollars a, they go up a little bit. It was like a hundred bucks when I first did it a mon- a year. And now it's like two hundred a, a year, but you know, if you really wanna build it, you can build.
Problem is, if you build it back part of the railroad, that's where you're gonna park them, so then you gotta figure out where to park them too, so. It could be done.
It'd be twenty-five feet from the center of the railroad.
Yeah, so.
That wouldn't be a good location anyhow over there.
Well.
Because you, if, if there's older people that come in, they're gonna have to climb the stairs. There's not enough parking in the front.
The issue, the main issue to me is the parking availability. That's, that's where you're gonna struggle with anything down through there is, is your parking, so. I'd say if we're gonna do this, we probably need to look at another viable option if we've got it available. And if not, then.
Do we have any property anywhere from the city?
No, if it would be located somewhere you would think to put, you don't want it next to a sewer station or. Um, I mean, we. You could, for the library, you could close in that.
Pull through.
Pull through.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. That'd probably be a better place to do it. And then we can keep that in our five-year budget too.
Yeah, you could add on to the library by doing that. You could get probably a whole nother rooms with, but. You're gonna disappoint those seniors that were hoping to get that room for activities or something else, so. You might could add it on to the fire hall, you know, uh, that's gonna be a little added expense to do that though.
That may be too much traffic in case of a situation.
Yeah, yeah. Plus. The way the city's growing and I think will continue to grow, we need to leave the fire property alone.
Yeah.
For fire and EMS, of course, so.
I would say add on to the community center now.
Uh, yeah, for an existing.
And even if they wanted another room, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off. Maybe we can add on another room for them. You know, if you, I guess just depending on who you get in here to lay it out, contract outlaws.
I can check on some ideas and try to figure out a plan. Go ahead and find your plan. Alright, anything?
Does anybody have anything else to them, Scott?
Nope. Spoke my piece.
Ms. Rio, Mr. Cobbleton, thank you for coming. We appreciate your time here. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.